So you didn't get to moon him for the night?
Yeah. I think, I think he's gonna be late.
I don't see him.
Yeah, I would start.
Okay, thank you. And at this moment, we'd like to call the town of Lake Clark Shores meeting for June 3rd at 6:30 into order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gregory Freebold, Vice Mayor John Maples.
Here.
President Pro Tem Bridget Keating.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor Materio.
Here.
Councilmember Kristy Mossbuck.
Here.
Great, thank you. Let's stand for a moment of silence. Ms. Betty Crestman, 30 year residents of Lake Clark Shores. Mr. Robert Holy, Holy, 55 years old. And Kerry Hobbs, 57 years old, passed. Let's have a moment of silence for them and their families. Thank you. And Pastor, if you would come up and lead us in our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. Thank you.
Let's pray. Well, Heavenly Father, we come before thee with gratitude and humility, asking for thy wisdom and guidance as we begin this meeting, to do what is right and good for all the citizens of this town. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to be good stewards of our community. We thank thee tonight, O Lord, for these thy servants, our town council members, our city manager, our first responders, and all who are set aside to serve and serve. May they put the interest of others above all. We thank thee for being God of love who is with us now. We thank thee for making each of us in this room, and every citizen of this town, in thy image and likeness. May we be good neighbors, may we be servants of each other. Help us to remember thy goodness, deepness, and all things. This we ask by all who pray.
Amen.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. At this time, we will have audience comments. If any audience have any comments, and take that at this time. So if anyone wanted to come up and speak about the agenda or something going on in the town, this would be a great moment. So do we have anyone who wanted to share any thoughts today? No, we can bring you something. It's okay, Genevieve, because we want you to give your name and address and do the whole thing. So he's gonna bring you a microphone just so it's on the record, so they can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, Genevieve Babrowski, 7501 Pine Tree Lane. Some months ago, Jen gave you, the former town council, uh, these 953 votes that we were gonna have about the sewer, Septic Tank. What are you doing about it?
That's a great question. And Genevieve, that's a great question on the petitions that were signed for the Septic Sewer. Let me get back to you on an answer for that, because I don't know for sure, but I will get back to you on that.
I'll accept that.
Okay.
And also, was my dollar-dollar garage sale passed? I didn't hear it last month.
Yes, ma'am, it did pass. Last meeting, there was a unanimous vote, and it passed 5-0 to.
Okay, I thank you all for it.
Thank you.
And I want to work with you people and, and help you, and I hope that you appreciate what I'm doing.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Genevieve, for your support and continued support for this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve.
Thank you, Genevieve.
We do, we want to work with you as well.
Okay, anybody else? You didn't fill out a card? Oh, there it is. It's in front of the.
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry, Tim. It's okay.
Okay, Tim, yeah, I'm with you. Come on up.
Timothy Doctor, 1410 Keller Road. Welcome. My son, Bobby.
Hmm.
And who should look is next to you, Dapper, so thank you for coming here. I want to discuss this, and I'll discuss this every month, Keller Road Bridge. There are stop signs now, okay? There's speed control, okay? Something must be done. Somebody's going to get hurt. Six months is way too long to wait. And study, study. I don't know what we're supposed to do in the meantime, okay? It's dangerous. Something must be done, okay? We have two, two very young kids running across the street. I'm not gonna stand for this much longer. Do I have to write a letter to Palm Beach Post for somebody to take some concern with this and safety of our small residents in our town? Do I have to do that, okay? Do something about it. It has to be done. It needs to be done now, not later, not six months from now. We've got to be on, bring up this communication, okay? This meeting has popped on us last minute, or on Monday, on the 3rd. We've never had a meeting on Monday and the 3rd, so maybe it's more so last second. And then, you know, that doesn't help us to get enough people here to be able to express their feelings in front of you. And I think that's inappropriate. I did copy this on us at the last minute. And when we're talking about communication, I mean, I see a consent agenda item for spending a quarter of a million dollars with a no-bid contract, okay? There is no information on that at all. $243,000. And state, waiving the bidding requirements do not, do not be advantageous to the town, okay? You don't let a quarter million dollar contract without a bid. I'm sorry. It's not done. It's just not done. It is never advantageous to let a contract for a quarter million dollars without a bid, okay? That, that's never advantageous. And that's not being good stewards and good douchiers for the money that the residents exchange.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, stick around. I'll speak to a few of those. I think we've got some insight that I think is worth sharing, so stick around. When we get to that, I'll share with you, okay? Thank you. Emily, anything online? Any questions or anything else there?
No.
No? Okay, fantastic. Anyone else for the good? Anyone else want to come up and share? Okay, fantastic. With that being said, we'll now go to approval of the agenda, and we will consider a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass, 5-0. So that was the, the agenda, and now we're gonna go on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I also raised that same issue with the, the town manager today about several items on the consent agenda. The headlines read rather alarmingly, but when I read the memos in, in my big binder, which the public doesn't have the access, access to, I understood the rationale behind them, but I, I think that perhaps, if not now, in, in, in his comments, the town manager could give everybody a comfort level.
I will.
Yeah, and, um, no, we, we've had that same discussion as well with the town manager and with everything considered. With that particular item, agenda item C. Tim, I mean, I know Joe can speak to this a little bit better, but we're piggybacking off some of the pricing that Lake Worth Beach has in their agreement that allows us to be able to lock this in at these current prices based on kind of picking off the prices that they've had in place before they change. And so I'm gonna let Joe speak to that, but the reality of it is, we, we had an opportunity to save, we had budgeted for this, this project to be about $330,000, and we were able to save about 90 grand by piggybacking on this Lake Worth Beach project and some of their pricing with some of their folks. So it was actually an opportunity for the town to save a, save a few dollars and actually get quality work from someone who's already been working within not only our town, but other municipals around the county. Come back up.
Again, Tim Doctor, 1410 Keller Road. What is this?
It's, it's a force main, about 900 feet of a force main that needs to be replaced. It's all the way down near Lantana in our service district. It's 60 years old, and it's failed several times over the last few years. We put it in the budget, was discussed in the budget, and we put it in at $330,000. We have an opportunity to piggyback the pricing on Lake Worth Beach's price. That contract's gonna expire next month, so we're taking this opportunity, we're getting the pricing before it actually goes up next month. And so that's why we're putting this on the agenda. And, and another reason is, there's a school nearby, and it's good to do this work while the school's not in session, so.
And let me add, if I can, the law in the state of Florida allows municipalities to piggyback another municipality's contract, provided the other municipality met the bid requirements. We did that, and we have a contract with Hinterland. The state law also says that our piggybacked contract cannot extend longer than the contract with the city that we're piggybacking. And it is about to expire, so our contract will expire. So we're simply, for all practical purposes, extending it based on the new contract that Lake Worth Beach has with Hinterland. So we met not directly the bid requirements, but indirectly the bid requirements when we piggybacked the agreement that is about to expire.
And thanks for the information, but it goes back to what I said before, communication. You need to let us know why you're doing that and what it goes to. There's no explanation given to us, okay? Other than you're spending a quarter million dollars without letting us know.
You can always get an email of the full packet. I'll be willing to send that to you every month if you'd like, because you can't put everything on a two-page agenda, but on the memo, it's all detailed in there.
Joe, we're in balance, and we can admit that, right?
Yes.
Okay. We need to know what's going on with our money.
It's, it's.
We need to know what's going on with our money.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. And, and in the future, if anyone would like all of the details that we have access to, that obviously you do not, because you're getting a one or two-page agenda, please email the town and ask for everything that we have. I'm sure the town will provide it happily. So in the future, that way, if you feel you need more information before coming to these meetings, so that you're prepared with everything that we have and that we're reading, we'll be happy to share it anytime.
If you'd like some light reading, we get this every month.
We have to do our homework.
Well, with that being said, I'm gonna go back to, are there any other discussion points or topics before we move to motion on the consent agenda? All right, here and none. I'd like to consider a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the illustrious Senator Bobby Powell from District 24, who's taking a nap. He's ready to give us an update and give us that legislative update from this recent session. Senator, thank you for joining us. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Love to hear from you today.
Here we go.
Hey, hit that, hit that power button so we can hear you, Senator. Senator, the power button right there, the base, oh, around it. Yeah, there we go. One more, one more. Just want to make sure we get you on, so if anybody watching at home, they can hear you.
It's not, it's not plugged in.
It's not plugged in?
That might help.
Senator, do I need to give you the introduction again, or you saw it?
We're great. We are indeed outstanding, and it's good to see everyone here. Of course, I am State Senator Bobby Powell Jr., representing Senate District 24, here in Palm Beach County, formerly Senate District 30, after redistricting it as 24. It's good to see you, Vice Mayor Maple.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Senator.
As well as President Pro Tem Kitty, Councilmember Materio, Councilmember Masbuck.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Close.
Town Manager Labello, and Town Attorney Chu. Did I say that right?
Sure.
Sure.
Sure. All right, of course, I am Bobby Powell. I'll give you the legislative update from the 2024 legislative session. Of course, this is a even year, and even years are election years, so we didn't have as many controversial things go on this year, but of course, we did have a few. But nonetheless, session was pretty, session was session. It's the most dangerous 60 days in the state of Florida, because anything can happen. Of course, we continue to fight and be a home rule champion, and we're glad that we're able to get through the 2024 legislative session. At some point, I'm gonna learn how to use a PowerPoint.
It's not you, it's, it's that setup.
So I'll, I'll tell you, first of all, I am excited to be the, one of the 40 senators in the state of Florida, and four, one of four that represent us here in Palm Beach County. And that's it, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, this is, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunately, this is my last time presenting to you all as a state senator. There will probably be an opportunity to present as a, in another capacity, as a county commissioner, but right now, this is my opportunity to present as a state senator. This year, I always go in with the idea that maybe we'll file, you know, just maybe 10 pieces of legislation, maybe 20. We always end up with well over 30. And this year, two of the pieces of legislation that we were able to get through the finish line impact our municipalities. One is city and county attorneys. Senate Bill 712, Public Records for County and City Attorneys. It allows for a public records exemption for city and county attorneys, deputy city and county attorneys, and their spouses and their children with regard to any personal identifying information, including photographs where their children go, all the personal information that you could find out about a city or county attorney. Now, this lasts for the life of the term of the city and county attorney. So if you are a county attorney or town attorney, and you now are no longer a town attorney, you go somewhere else, your public records exemption now ends. Unlike if you work for the state's attorney's office, your exemption is forever, in perpetuity. For this piece of legislation, they made it, and I debated that when it was happening for state's attorneys, but for this legislation, they indicated that it would only be valid while someone with a city or county attorney. And again, that's the names, home addresses, telephone numbers, photographs, places of employment, and dates of birth of the spouses and the children, and location of schools as city and county attorneys. Another piece of legislation that we were able to move, wow, that was quick, this year was wills and estates. It provided clarity in procedures to resolve probate disputes regarding property that's owned by spouses in this state, but acquired while the spouse lived in another state, part of the Community Property Act. One of the issues is, in terms of if a spouse passes away, it kind of brought together some language that was, that the courts had passed and adopted, it codified it in state law. The bill also ensures the availability of necessary information about the deceased individuals is contained in land records and maintained by the clerks of circuit courts, so that proper errors can be identified in the chain of title. Another bill that we had moving all the way through the process, and I thought this was a pretty good bill. It was step from nonprofits. In a nutshell, what it does is, if you take a nonprofit organization, we know that 501(c)(3)'s have a more difficult time raising funds, right? And when they do so, people, it's an extra level of scrutiny. Now, there are people who we entrust to manage those nonprofits or who have access to nonprofits. So this would now, would have, and this moved through the Senate once again, all the way through the process, and then got stuck in the House. 120 people in the House is the problem. 120 state representatives. It would have increased the penalties. $50,000 or more, the offender, a offender would have committed a first-degree felony. At this point, that's still a misdemeanor. $10,000 or more, but less than $50,000, the offender would have committed a second-degree felony. Actually, it's a step up. And then $300,000 or more, but less than $10,000, the offender commits a third-degree felony. Currently, the third degree is a misdemeanor. The second degree is a third degree, and then the first degree is a second degree. So we, we wanted to up the ante to make it more difficult and provide greater penalty for individuals who would steal from a nonprofit, who works, who individuals work really hard to come by those funds. The next bill was a bill that would have dealt with youth conflict, with the peer mediation program, the pilot program that would have dealt with middle and high school students, to work with a nonprofit to create this, our resolve conflict resolution in five schools in the state of Florida that would have been chosen by the Secretary of Education or someone with, I'm sorry, Commissioner Education, someone within that Commissioner's purview, and that's Commissioner Manny Diaz. This would have been a pilot program to reduce juvenile violence by equipping students with the essential skills and tools for peaceful conflict resolution by equipping students with these skills and also using a peer mediation pilot program. Here, we talked about the, working on the program with a group here in Palm Beach County called the Inner City Innovators. But this could have happened anywhere in the state with any particular group that would have been a nonprofit able to receive funding to work to resolve these conflicts, and this may not pass, it didn't pass this year, but it may pass next year with another senator taking it on, and then another House member. But this would be a pilot program that could expand throughout the state and could help us reduce or end some of the violence that we see inside of our, our, I don't say Palm Beach County, but inside of our public schools here in the state of Florida. And another piece of legislation that saw some changes and got a lot of movement through the process was the Temporary Cash Assistance Bill. This bill would have maintained the existing prohibition from receiving temporary cash assistance, whether it be SNAP or TANF for individuals who were convicted of drug trafficking. But it would have created an exemption if that person who's convicted of drug trafficking was also a victim of human trafficking. And we know we have a huge problem here in the state of Florida, actually nationally, with human trafficking. So if someone's been a victim of human trafficking and they have children or they're able to receive temporary cash assistance somewhere else in another state, if they're here in the state of Florida, we recognize that's an circumstance, and we push that they would have been able to receive temporary cash assistance here in the state of Florida as well. This was another bill that made it all the way through the process in the Senate, and then got stuck in the House. Now, this is the most important thing that we have to pass every year in Tallahassee. It is the appropriations. We had a $117 billion budget this year. Many of us are still holding our breath, and if you look on the screen, that color is, for all the numbers, is still red, right? It's red because the governor does not sign the budget until, well, we're in June, so at some point this month, the governor's gonna sign the budget. We're all holding our breath. It may be tomorrow, it may be June 28th, 29th, maybe 30th, but we know the governor will sign the budget, and there will be, in the past, there have been vetoes. The problem with the vetoes is, how much will Palm Beach County get hit, right? There's been times that the governor vetoed up to $3 billion out of the budget, and last year, he did 500 million, which, if you think of it, 500, $500 million is a lot of money. In the grand scheme of things, when you know, you compare that to, in terms of member projects and things specifically for communities, compare that to $3 billion, it's a lot less. The governor was a little busy last year. I don't know if there's anything that we can do to keep him preoccupied right now. We talk about the budget, but I've got people working on that for us. So in that, some of the things that we thought were important for Palm Beach County, dredging project of $1 million for Palm Beach shores, which will allow some of the more larger ships to get back in through that channel and get into the port. Westgate CRA, which is not that far away from here, $250,000. Oak Street Home Project, Female Delinquency Program. Roosevelt School Enhancement, almost 800, well, almost $1 million, $847,000. Right across the street, I say across, but right down the street, Palm Beach Atlantic University, half a million dollars for the George Lemieux Center for Public Policy. The Catapult Act School Youth Mentoring Program, half a million dollars. Teach, Touch the Trades, $358,750 there. Palm Springs Congress Avenue Sewer Force Main, we talked about a million dollars. Mangonea Park, $750,000. Riviera Beach, another half a million dollars for the Singer Island Fire Station being demoed. North Palm Beach, $255,000. The Zoo, $110,000 for safety and upgrades, and we also have additional funding in the budget for the zoo. West Palm Beach Fire Department Contamination Reduction Project, $116,000. And then the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Station, $500,000. Now, this is the page that I really like. We got $9 million for the Palm Beach State College remodel of the student library. That's big, and it's really important for Palm Beach County because of the economic impact that will have in terms of this area, what Palm Beach State College has done and continues to do. What's super exciting for me is the $5 million that we have for the Cox Science Center. As you know, the Cox Science Center is one of the most enlightening places here in Palm Beach County, a number of different exhibits. My daughter and my wife and myself, we attend the Cox Science Center frequently. She loves the dinosaurs and the robots, but not too fond of the recent Titanic exhibit. They're like, oh, you can touch a big block of ice. She's like, okay. Can we go to the brain area, which is exciting, but we got another $5 million for that. They're doing a 75,000 square foot expansion for the aquarium and exhibit, so that's super exciting, and it'll be so much more for our kids in Palm Beach County to enjoy, and it's really necessary and needed. The YMCA, we got another half a million dollars in the budget for that. The Town of Lake Clark Shores, the Pine Tree Lane Bridge Replacement, $250,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the City of Belle Glade, Green Acres, and City of Palm Beach Gardens, we also got money in the budget for road projects and expansion. Overall, in the budget, myself, along with my colleague, I have to admit, he was here earlier, Representative David Silvers, we've worked together on a lot of projects. He, we were able to get a total of $30 million, more than $30 million in the budget as of now. As of now, we'll see what the governor does. You know, we've been very, very nice to the governor. We're so happy and proud of him. Just need him to make sure he leaves all Palm Beach County alone, and we'll be good. Major bills during the session, these are things that you might want to just know about. There's some other things that we'll talk about, like balloons. 491, we passed legislation that would loosen work restrictions on 16 and 17-year-olds. For example, it would maintain the 30-hour work week, but it would limit teens who are in school during that time, but if you're a parent and you want to waive that and allow your children to work 40 hours, you can. Vote for them. Unauthorized camping and public sleeping. This bill, which goes into effect on October 1st, unlike most legislation that goes into effect July 1st, or when it's signed into law, lawmakers passed a controversial plan that would bar cities and counties from allowing homeless people to sleep at places such as public buildings in the right of way, but the local governments could designate sites for sleeping or camping, would have to be approved by DCF and cannot be contiguous to residential property. So it has to be somewhere maybe civic zone, maybe publicly owned, approved by DCF, have running water, and have resources there and available. The challenge is the legislative. The challenge is the logistics of getting all the people who are homeless to these locations, but that was passed in the legislature. I think there's about thirty million dollars attached to it. That's for the entire state of Florida, not Palm Beach County alone, thirty million dollars. So we'll, we'll see what happens by October. Flood disclosures on sale of real property. Basically, if you sell property or somebody purchasing a property and it has flooded in the past, it needs to be disclosed the contract being executed. Social media protection for minors. This bill bans social media for anyone fourteen years old and under fifteen and sixteen year olds can use social media if it is allowed by their parents, with parent permission, they can now use social media, but to a limited extent. And it also, the original bill was HB one, which was vetoed by the governor because it disallowed anyone seventeen and under accessing social media, and it also had quicker and harsher restrictions with regard to adult websites. Individuals who would access adult websites would have to make sure that they're over the age of eighteen or twenty one. I forget what it was, but by doing so, there was a verification process where they would have to use their license to, you know, verify who they are when accessing adult websites. So the governor vetoed that piece of legislation. Vacation rentals, simple bill, going to go to eighty, basically restricted everything back to the state. If you have a vacation rental ordinance here in Lake Clark Shores, guess what? It's been remanded back to the state of Florida. You cannot pass an ordinance that doesn't deal directly with the state of Florida. The bill also, this is what I thought was interesting as a planner. It says that the maximum overnight occupancy of a vacation rental cannot exceed two persons per bedroom plus an additional two persons in one common area or more than two persons per bedroom, if at least fifty square feet per person plus an additional two persons in one common area, whichever is greater. As a planner, I think that's really interesting because I'm just wondering who's going to go and monitor the square footages of everyone who is going into an Airbnb. I don't know who's doing it, but it's very interesting that we put that language into a state law, into statute, and that is the language that's there. With that, I didn't get into some of the other bills that passed this year that you may have heard about. We made some changes to live local with regard to the area ratio. We passed legislation this year that I thought was good legislation related to live healthy. A number and a series of bills designed to work with our healthcare providers so that people have better access to healthcare. Of course, the state of Florida has not expanded Medicaid and will not do so. At least in any time in the near future, it may happen at some point, anything's possible. There was also legislation that passed this year with regard to pretrial detention. If someone is charged with a violent crime, they could be held in pretrial detention until the issue is resolved, no longer, you know, be, being able to get a bond. Oh, and let's talk about balloons. So recently, I was at a public event on Memorial Day and it's not illegal, yet it will become illegal on July first, I think. But you're no longer allowed to release more than ten balloons into the air at a time to celebrate anything. Unless you're under the age of six. So if you're under the age of six, you probably get away with it, you know, to celebrate memorials and things like that. However, if you release ten balloons or more, you could face a civil penalty. I was at a public event recently and they did release like a hundred balloons into the air. And I wanted to go and say, hey, you know, we just made that illegal. But for the betterment of the event for that particular time, I kind of held off. I'll send them an email for next year to let them know that, hey, you know, just a heads up, don't do this again next year because we made it, the state of Florida did make it illegal. With that being said, I will be able to entertain any questions, but I do want to just take a moment to introduce my team who are here. Malcolm Summons, he's one of my legislative aides. Malcolm is in charge of, we call Malcolm the Chief Communications Officer. He does our Power Press YouTube TV show, which is available on YouTube. You'll find it on that QR code with our link tree, as well as a lot of our photos and media that go on to enter, enter, it's Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, LinkedIn, not TikTok. We ban TikTok in the state of Florida. So I don't have a TikTok. A young person asked me early, we have some interns in our office. Do we have TikTok? Because you, you know, do some innovative things. And I'm like, no, it's not allowed in the state of Florida. Pretty soon it might not be allowed in the United States, so we'll catch up with that. Also, I had my chief of staff, Diane Andre is right there. She's also an attorney, so she is the one who's really responsible for making sure I know what's in all of those bills. And when we pass or file legislation to know if it passes muster and we sit there with the other attorneys in Tallahassee and hash things out. Michelle DeMarco is located in Tallahassee. And then we had really, two really, really good interns this year. Baylen Worthen, who just graduated from FAMU, he is a, was a senior, but he is also a native of Riviera Beach, Florida, right here in Palm Beach County. And then we had Sabrina Vittajet, who just came back to see us this weekend and is excited because she's getting ready to go spend some time in Washington DC with my former colleague and the former Department of Emergency Management Director Jared Moskowitz, who is now a congressman. So she has an intern there internship. So we're super proud of her. She's a junior. She's going into her senior year. And with that being said, that's pretty much all we have. I'm excited to entertain any questions. Glad to be here before you all today. And by the way, I didn't say this, but serving in government closest to the people is super important. So congratulations all of you who have recently been elected or reelected to the Town of Lake Clark Shores. It's really, really important that you stand up for the people who live here. And this is where it happens at. One of the things that I think is most important when I am in Tallahassee, it's making sure that the local people have a voice. So home rule is really, really important. Home rule transcends the idea of Democrat and Republican or no party affiliation. Home rule deals with the idea that we must maintain and manage government closest to the people, and it's not those of us in Tallahassee who should be taking that away. All of you were elected to represent your constituents at your level, and I believe that Tallahassee should kind of back off. So with that being said, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, I am here to answer questions. I don't think I'm going back to Tallahassee unless we have a special session, but I'm definitely here to listen and be able to help because I do know, at least I believe I know, who will be replacing me in Tallahassee as the state senator. We've got a pretty good relationship. Well, Senator, thank you so much. And open up the council. If you guys want to share anything for the Senator.
Thank you for all the funds that you've, you've gathered for Palm Beach County, our, our bridge. And I happen to be a fan of Path to College, so the Catapult money was nice to see as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Senator Powell, for all of your work on behalf of all of us here. Did you, have you formally announced what the future holds for you?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
We are definitely.
Just in case the people here don't know.
We, we are off to the races. Of course, I've announced that I'm running for county commission and Commissioner Matt Bernard has announced that he is running for state senate to replace me. And everything's open. We are, we're actually in the campaign. Qualifying starts next week. So after the fourteenth, I believe, we will know who all has officially qualified and who hasn't, who's going to do this and do that. But we're excited about what the future holds. And that's all of the elections. One of the things I didn't talk about is in terms of elections, the supervisory of elections has moved, by the way, to Cherry Road, but also we passed legislation this year. My good friend, Senator Jonathan Martin in the Senate, along with Peggy Gosses Sideman, we know that we've seen an increasing number of non-party affiliates. And a lot of times people say, well, more people want to just not be attached to a party. That's a part of it, but a part of it is also the fact that when people are registering, they're not sure what a party is or what party they are. And somebody says, well, do you want to register at the tax collector's office? And they go, am I registered or not? I don't know. And they say, well, we'll register you. And if you're a Democrat or a Republican, they just register you no party. So you may have thought, I think I was registered before. I used to be. I don't know. Maybe I was a Republican. I don't know. And now you're like, well, just register me. I don't care. Then they register people as new party. This legislation now requires that if you are registered as a Democrat or Republican and they re-register you, they have to talk to you specifically and ask and say, hey, you're a Democrat. We have you registered as a Democrat. Would you rather re-register the Democrat or would you want to register the no party or would you want to register as a? That way, it kind of corrects what has been happening throughout the state of Florida, or maybe more people just continue to register no party. We'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service and good luck with your future endeavors in politics, especially the county. See you soon.
Thank you very kindly.
Senator Lassler, thank you. I saw PBA up there, obviously the town and Cox Science Center. My daughter also, she's fourteen and she loves, she loves the Science Center and plus my classmate runs that place over there, so she does a great job. But thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Thank you for the long hours you and your team put in consistently day after day. I think I've seen you in every single event I've ever been to. So I thank you for just committing to stay connected and, you know, good luck on, on, on the next steps for you and your future. It's bright. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. And y'all know I'm only a phone call away, and if you need anything, reach out. Thank y'all so much and y'all enjoy the rest of your evening and the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, we're gonna go to unfinished business. I see none. We're gonna go to the status report. And we're gonna start there. I think Chief, we typically start with you.
All right, sir. The police department in the month of May responded to four hundred one calls for service. Those four hundred calls, I give you some examples. A couple of arrest warrants, domestic violence, neighbor issues. We had multiple health issues, a total of five baker acts. That's where people are incarcerated for seventy two hours for evaluation. We had four arrests, misdemeanors, narcotics, battery, two death investigations. One was a suicide by hanging. The other one, individual fell and died from a head injury. And those, we worked in conjunction with the medical examiner's office. And a lot of people don't know this, but anytime a police department does death investigation, it's under a statute that's controlled through the medical examiner. The officers completed a hundred and eighty one traffic stops, ninety two citations were issued, thirty five criminal, thirty five moving, twenty two non-moving, and a hundred and two written warnings were issued. There were six crashes. Our flock camera system processed a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty tags through our seven camera system. We had one hit on the watch list, terrace watch list, which we usually get one a month. We're starting training. We just did our CPR. We're doing firearms training. Code enforcement was busy. Sixty four violations were issued. Seventy five re-inspections completed with ten still in violations, which probably will go to the code board. Twelve notice of hearings, fifteen board cases, seven were in compliance. And I think he handled six false alarm notices with two that were paid. And we did three new golf registrations. That kind of gives you an idea. As, as you all approved later on this year, we received our new upgrade to our TASER ten, so we'll be doing training with that. One thing I want to mention, I talked with the, the manager and mentioned to him, we are involved in an undercover operation involving gambling with the Sheriff's Department West Palm and the Department of State with Florida. I received a check for twenty eight thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars. So we also just finished, I mentioned before, another gambling operation, which we seized two million dollars in cash. So we should be getting a piece of that pie in the near future. So that's my report, kind of breakdown. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief?
Chief, do you have any color on the unfortunate cat incidents taking place over in Carmarthen?
That's still under investigation and I have to be very careful talking about that because it involves somebody owns a business and so forth. So, but it's still ongoing. There is a reward being offered. We have not had any issues lately that I'm aware of. Not reported.
Who put up the reward money?
It was, I'm sorry, what?
Who put up the reward money?
Non-for-profit.
Okay.
Alley cats.
Is that ten or five? Five thousand, five thousand.
Have you, will one of the existing officers replace the Marine Patrol who resigned?
Well, right now I have, I'm utilizing everybody on the road. I mean, if we have an emergency, we can get the Marine unit out. That individual worked part-time and we did not have a full-time position, so he went to work for Ocean Ridge. So we were happy for him to be able to work there. Some of you may not know this, but the police chief in Ocean Ridge lives in our town.
Interesting. So I have a question. I know it says that you're monitoring everything with the Keller Bridge. So are you able to share at all if there's been any reports that have come in? Or if there's major speeding, just due to the nature of the comment we had before?
Right. I gave the manager an update on what we're doing so far and he, he reviewed it and I don't know if he shared it. It's up to him, but we, we do have a database. You can ask any of the police officers. We don't see an issue. We haven't seen any kids in the area. It's being monitored by all three shifts, but the database from the computer on the vehicles coming in and the average speed is, is I think it's like fifteen or sixteen miles per hour. It's under twenty, twenty-five, but the, the manager's got the data. We did a report for him. But what we'd like to do, we wanted to wait so we could do this six months report, which the manager wanted us to do. This information was turned over to the traffic engineer, so he'll be reviewing it.
He is reviewing it right now. I did send it over to the traffic engineer and he'll, he'll do a cursory look, but we sent him thirty pages of broad data to look at, and he's gonna visit the site to see if there's any safety issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're, 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 you know, we have copies. Manager has a copy. You're always welcome to look at it.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for the Chief? Chiefs, thank you to you and your team for all your hard work and commitment to protecting this town and keeping us safe. So thank you for everything that you guys are doing. Joe, just a follow-up thought on that. When we get that to the engineer, the traffic engineer, are they going to look at stop signs and location of speed bumps and speed tables and some changes there?
Yes, I asked him to not only look at it at its current state, but to look at it if the gates go down permanently, because we haven't made a decision. What would it look like? What would you like it to look like after? Just a speed table, extra stop signs? So I asked him to do both.
And, and when is he potentially coming to the table with that information so we can?
He didn't give me a date, but he's very quick about doing things. We just sent him the stuff last week.
Any expectation to have something by next meeting? Is that possible?
Oh, yeah. I believe that we'll have it by next meeting.
That'd be great. If we can, if we can do that, would that be good to have that data?
Bless you. Yeah, we'll give him a call to make sure, but he, I told him it was a safety concern, so he knew to go out there quickly.
Yeah, that would be great. Even if we could get some of his potential recommendations so that we can let the residents know that it is a concern of theirs, it's definitely a concern of ours as well.
We, we have not had any complaints. I mean, you do get a few complaints here, but I checked with all the different shifts. We've not had anybody. It's been mostly positive about the gates not being there. Now, the stop sign issue keeps coming up. The stop signs were illegal. And I told the manager, the town, you know, the liability, and they need to be taken down because there's no gates there. So there's no reason to stop.
You, you can't have a gate, I mean, a stop sign.
roadway.
Isn't that like a state statue?
Yes, it's a law.
It's a state law, right?
It's a law. We couldn't, we could put it back if you put the gates back.
Okay, but while the gates are down, we have to take the stop though.
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll review all that.
That would be great if you could get, get back to us on that.
Not a problem.
As quickly as we can get next meeting. Nothing else than Mr. Sheck, your report?
My report is very brief because of the shortness between meetings. It's in your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sheck from the town? Any questions for Mr. Shack from the town council? Seeing none, Mr. Labello?
Thank you. Just coming up on the upcoming meetings, we're going to, our next meeting is July ninth. This is a very important meeting because we go over our proposed budget. Proposed budget is the first draft. It also, but takes two official actions, which is setting the proposed mileage rate, which is a ceiling, which means it can go down from there, but it cannot be raised from there. So you have to set a worst-case scenario in July. We, we had some good news on our property values. Our property values overall preliminarily went up about eight percent for this town, which is very good news. But it's a preliminary number, so I'll have the real numbers in July. But that, the, the property values are doing well in Lake Clark Shores. The next meeting after that will be July, August thirteenth. And then we have two meetings in September, which are required because of the budget. Upcoming events, we just started the tennis camp today, runs through Wednesday. The fishing tournament starts on the seventeenth to the twenty-first for our kids. We're still taking sign-ups for that. The senior club's doing great. We had a presentation last month on managing or Medicare. And it was really well-received, a lot of questions. This month, as, as you know, it's the start of hurricane season. You should all have a plan, a kit. Everybody should be talking about that. So we're gonna have that on our senior club. We're gonna have a representative from Red Cross and staff. We'll do a presentation about the upcoming hurricane season. You probably heard in the media, everyone is anticipating an active season. Septic to sewer conversion information session is going well. You know what's on the website. We're taking questions. That's coming up on July fifteenth. And going on my next, unfortunately, we, we found out we did not get that grant for septic to sewer. We, there was basically only twenty-seven projects that were awarded out of the hundred applicants. We, we are listed as, I don't want to get specific, but we, we're entering, we are called a RAP program for septic for our lakes. We're not a BMAP. And they changed the legislature this past session. We were actually involved with that, believe it or not, in Lake Clark Shores, changing the legislature to make us more available to grants if you're in a RAP program, which is a voluntary program versus a BMAP, which is a mandated program. So all, these staff reports are on the website too. It's all listed there. It goes into great detail. But they told us, don't be discouraged. Keep putting it in there because there is a chance we might be awarded in the future. Going on this, there was a picture of the bridge. I don't see it anymore, but we had, the council asked for an artistic drawing on the bridge. Don't have to go anything over that because Senator Powell said that's perfectly. We're still waiting for the, the governor to sign the budget. So we won't, won't sign the bridge contract until the governor signs the budget.
Not to cut you off, could we get that picture of the bridge up just so everyone could see it?
I think she's trying to get it back.
Yuli is gonna do it.
Okay.
And it's, we're planning on.
Do the camera seven.
We're, we're planning on framing it, putting on a matted frame. So it'll, it'll look really nice. We'll put it in the town center, in the town hall. We've been talking about the lead pipes survey, the inventory that's mandated by the federal government. What it means is every house, we're gonna have to inspect your house to make sure that you have any, if you have any lead pipes. We've concluded about a third of our residents in Lake Clark Shores, and we haven't found anything yet, but this'll take the whole summer to do. We're working on the CRA. The last, last month, you guys approved through consensus to go out for a request for qualifications for a landscape architect for the Forest, Forest Hill Parks, which is Memorial Pine Tree and North Parks. So we're working on that. The meter project, changing out all the water meters, that is completed in the town, but has not been completed in our service area, which is Seminole Manor, Hypoluxo Village. So that's going on. It's fifteen hundred meters. So it's, it's a large project. Other items to report, staff is working on changing all of our phones, our landlines, and going over to voice over IP, working with the county because the county actually can go into a, a contract with the county. If we're successful in that, we have to bring that to you. Any contract, we have to bring to you. So we'll, we'll talk about that. We're also talking about minimizing or reducing landlines or analog lines because they cost so much. So that's a project we're doing. The road on Florida Mango should be open tomorrow morning. That's what they're telling me at nine AM. We'll see. It's still not open today. But tomorrow morning, they said it should be open. On Florida Mango.
Florida Mango.
Florida Mango.
It's, it's been closed.
As you know, we're working on the substitute sewer conversion. Staff's working on the budget, as I said. So if you have any comments on any capital projects for council, let me know. Again, the first draft is a draft. We call it the proposed budget, but it's just a draft. And then we, in August, we massage it and we get it to a tentative budget. And then we get it to an approved budget in September. We joined the Palm Beach County Central Chamber of Commerce. We were members years ago. So we, we, we put that membership back in. We, we've been talking to the director and I'm gonna decide, I'm gonna go to some of their meetings so we can start a relationship with the chamber. So if anybody wants to join me in those meetings, let me know. I'm, I'm interested in the government affairs, obviously. In, so if anybody wants to help me with that endeavor, let me know. As the chief said, we had CPR for all the police officers and staff went well. They did, fire, fire rescue, want to thank them because they did for free. They're gonna come and do it again. So that was an awesome, really good session. So if anybody wants to do that, you should go to it, even if you, you've done it ten years ago because things change. Last, we're, we're asking for volunteer applications for any of our boards. We have about three mem, three people that have submitted. And we'll probably bring that up for next meeting, for you guys to decide on. So that's my staff report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Labello. Any questions for the town manager?
Can I ask a question related to one of our public comment pieces? Can you explain to everyone how notice for the meetings takes place?
The, the notice on this one, we, we actually, we said it three months ago that we were talking about this changing to a Monday, June third because staff had a conflict. And we, we actually put it on our website. We actually put it on social media. So we, we, we pretty much put it out there.
Okay, I just wanted everyone to have that information because I knew we had it on our calendar about three months ago as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. And, and it will change again in September because September, we cannot conflict with the school board or the county on their budget meetings. So that's why I don't even want to mention the September meetings because they, they won't be, I think the first one is the second Tuesday, right? We did get the second Tuesday in September.
One is on a Monday.
Oh, one's on a Monday?
And then the, the second meeting is on a Tuesday.
Okay, so one of them is, so we'll, we'll mention those again and put them out again. But in September, the, there's two meetings and they are usually not on the second Tuesday because you cannot conflict with the county or the school board. Thank you for that question.
Anybody else for the town manager? Mr. Labello, thank you. And I would be happy to help you with the chamber. I do have some relationships already there, so we can continue to foster those. And maybe that'll help the town in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for the pine tree bridge illustration and visual. It does look a lot better now that we're talking a little bit about what we're spending money on so we can see that product. We are still waiting for the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar nod, as the senator just mentioned, for the bridge. So that is part of the final hurdle. We did get the, the, the visual. So we do have that. And we're waiting on the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the state. Again, waiting on the governor and the budget. So we'll see how that goes. Fingers crossed, prayer said, we're gonna get that thing done. But, okay, thank you, Mr. Labello, for your report. Council comments. Oh, wait, chief's not here. Fire, I'm sorry, council. She's not here? Fire department?
No.
Usually their monthly report is, it takes a week. That's why ours was delayed because I wanted to get the full month in.
Okay. Because proximity of our meetings.
Yeah, perfect. I didn't want to make sure I didn't skip her. Okay, perfect, council. Sorry about that. Any council comments for tonight?
Yes, I'd like to encourage as many of our fellow residents to volunteer for the boards, the, the open positions. It's a, it's a great opportunity to serve the community and to be involved. Secondly, after we left the last meeting, I was troubled by the, the decision we had made about the lien reduction for seventeen forty Carissa. When we struck two of the liens from what they were required to pay, it almost felt like we were extending grace, but we weren't. We were just removing duplicates. And it's not uncommon to extend some grace in that situation. And one thought that came to me would be to reduce some of the fines that took place in the backyard because they're not imposing so much on the, on the, on the neighbors. I think there was a truck in the backyard and there was some grass issues in the backyard. In exchange for like a little carrot, give them three months to, to pay the, to pay, reduce the fine a little bit and then give them three months to pay. So we'll, we'll induce them, incentivize them to, to, to pay, to pay the fine because a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, I believe, is what we left it at, is a big nut and it might just end up in them losing the house. But if we can, you know, give them a, a little bit of a break and induce them to go ahead and make the payment, that's to everybody's benefit.
And, and what were your thoughts on reducing it and what amount?
Well, as I recall, there was a truck issue in the backyard that was fifty-four thousand dollars. And I would like to see pictures from Officer Richwagen of that, that. And then I believe the grass issue was twenty-something thousand dollars. So since those are not, yeah, anything that directly affects the neighbors should not be reduced. But those are, are fairly benign effect on those that are surrounding them. So I would recommend reducing, with Officer Richwagen's input, reducing the grass issue to zero and getting Officer Richwagen's input as to how much to reduce the fifty-four thousand dollars for the semi truck. And then again, incentivize them, give them ninety days to pay the, the, and if they don't pay within that ninety days, the number goes back up to the hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I, can I give you your options?
Yes, please.
You, you can actually entertain that tonight and make up, she can make a motion. Or probably more advisable is to put it back on if you want to. It's consensus. We can put it on July's meeting and you can discuss it again. And we can invite Eric here. So it's up to you and we can notify the homeowner too. So those are your options. You can do nothing or you can, somebody can make a motion or you can, we can talk about this at the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Shack, anything to add on that?
No, the manager is absolutely correct.
Okay, then the ninety-day time period to pay and all that, we could set that standard if we would, if we chose to.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it to this council for discussion to the, the idea of the motion on the table. Taylor, any thoughts that you want to add to that discussion?
I feel comfortable with the decision that we made at the last meeting.
Okay. Bridget?
I'm hoping agenda it so that everybody gets notified. It's put on, the, the residents come out, the homeowners will come out, officer, sorry.
Richwagen.
Richwagen will come out. So everybody will be present and then we, to give a formidable decision and then make the decision from there. May stay the same, may, may be reduced. And I bet I think everybody, given everybody an opportunity to put it on the record and give everybody out here a voice to say, I think it's the wise thing to do and it's the most sensible thing for the public. Everybody gets notified of what the issue is. It's, I think it's unfair of my personal intent. We made a decision, now we bring it up to make another decision now without the people present is not fair.
No, I agree. I think it should be put on the agenda next time. And I think that the code officer should be here in person with photographs so that, you know, we can.
We can, we, we'd be more than happy to get with the manager to do that. And I think that's important to listen to the town side because you, we are very accommodating. And there's a lot of reasons why things don't get done. People deliberately, deliberately don't comply. But I think it's good to listen to what the code enforcement officer has to say. And you, you all can, you know, talk about it and decide what you want to do. I, I don't have, you know, I'm neutral in it, but I just would like the general public to know that generally when people have these types of fines, they, they're, they just ignore us, almost like laugh at us, you know? Which you would not hear about, but we deal with it on a daily, weekly basis. So it may be important to hear his side.
Absolutely.
And, and I think it's important, if, if you feel like you can help, that would be great. If you can help the people, that would be great. But I don't, I, I don't want us to get beat up or the city get beat up. If anything, we get beat up about being too nice and, and too easygoing and, and always trying to go out of our way where other people get upset that we do too much on accommodating people. So that's my take on it for being here for twenty-four years.
If I can just elaborate on my comment before, thank you, Chief, for that. Being that I am, I served on the code enforcement board, I think I have a really good understanding as to how long that process took for it to get to the fines that it was at and what that process looked like. So I might have a different perspective on it. So I will entertain having the code enforcement officer come, although he did speak to us back and have him present that in a fuller context. But I do feel that we have to be careful to not become a code board up here. They went through this process for what, over a year with them? With a lot of opportunity to do what needed to be done. And also taking into full consideration that this is not their personal home. This was a business that they were running at properties that somebody else was living in. And in some of these circumstances that were very egregious, in my opinion, so.
I concur. I think, I, I value your insight because you, you did sit on it. You do know it more intimately than we do. However, I think that just by entertaining that opportunity and also the neighbors want to come because it's not only affected the person living in there and the residents. They, I, I know, I probably see Chief Weston's issue is that they do kind of laugh at you. They go, well, they're just gonna waive it anyway. So we're not the code enforcement board, but I think another look at it and everybody come out, say their piece, it may stay the same and it may not.
Well, one, one of those have been going on for twenty years. Twenty years.
At seventeen forty Carissa?
No.
No.
Another ad.
Not the other address.
Totally different.
I think the point is it can snowball quickly.
So with that being said, I, I know that when we made that decision at the last council meeting, it was a tough one to be made. And even there at the end, we looked for another opportunity at that meeting to try to reconsider that fine and somehow make, to lower it. But then, again, the facts were presented and we were not in the position at that time to even do it then. And I, I like to, I'm kind of the type of person, I like to make a decision, stand by it and move forward. And I think that's the best decision for everybody instead of rehashing and having the same result from the same folks. So I am in, I would have to agree with Taylor on this one because while compassionally, I want to, hey, let's bring this back to the table. But in the same breath, it's, you know, we do this again to have the same result. It just continues to kind of leave a bad taste in everyone's mouth. You know, when you come back again and it almost, we almost kind of step on the toes of the folks that we said were doing such a great job at being our code enforcement team and the work that they've put in and the decision that they've made to bring that to the table at this time. And so I'm really hesitant to, you know, bring this back to another council meeting and, and deliberate on this again. But with that being said, that means that two of us, that's why there's five of us up here. Two of us have said, no, we don't want to do that. And two have said, hey, let's bring that back to the next meeting. So then now, guys, I'm gonna have to defer to the attorney on that decision. Do we table this? Do we continue to move forward? What, what are your thoughts?
Well, if it's a. Well, if it's a two to two vote, it dies. And I thought I heard Councilmember Materio say that she is inclined to leave it the same, but she would not be opposed to having it brought back in July if the code officer was here. So I think we just need to put that to a a vote and see if it's a, if a majority prevails, if it's a tide, then the motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Scheck. Councilman, Councilwoman, Mosbach, can you give us a formal motion and so that we can have a formal vote?
I move that the council reconsider or or rehear.
Rehear, yes.
The lean reduction request for seventeen forty Carissa with the code officer present in person and with photographs and and a full report.
And that would be for the July?
In July, yes.
And that was for the address?
Seventeen forty.
Seventeen forty, just for clarity.
Carissa.
So for clarity, then, that would be mean a presentation by the code officer and but we're also inviting neighbors and.
I I feel like we didn't have all the information when we made our decision because the code officer wasn't here and we didn't have photographs of or, you know, input from the neighbors. I would could be persuadable to leave it as it is, you know, given a a fuller, a fuller presentation.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, so we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So the motion fails.
Motion fails.
No worries. I would ask Chief that anytime that we have another lean reduction, that that the code officer is is here in person, please?
Yes, we've we've never had these issues come up, but I I talked with the manager and he agreed. And as long as we get a heads up, we'll put together the case and be reviewed. And you can review it, but I will tell you, if you go to the code board and sit and watch, I mean, it is very, very thorough. Goes on for fifteen, twenty minutes, sometimes an hour where everything is presented and back and forth that the people show up. So.
Thank you.
That's a great recommendation. Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilwoman?
Okay.
I had a council comment regarding Genevieve's statement about the signatures. And you, yeah, you were going to go into some detail on that, Vice Mayor Maples. And I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of what we're doing on in July and how that relates. So I don't know, I don't want to take your comment. And so if you were going to elaborate on that.
No, for sure. And and what I was going to do was get some information with her comment and from Mr. Genevieve Brambowski's comment of what we're doing there with those petitions that was submitted to the town and that work. I know we have the, and I was going to talk about getting your request in for the sewer de septic, are your questions?
Okay.
But what what are we doing specifically about the petitions to? And I I I know that I believe there was a vote in in my short tenure here about the petition, specifically what the petition stated. That what we were doing, the council still had the still can move forward with what we were doing or like the petition, something was was not right. Was that correct?
The petition was totally defective. It did not comply with the requirements of the town's code at all. It asked for something that could not be granted under the code.
It asked for something that cannot be granted. That's the word I was looking for.
And and I have, I I sent a letter to Jennifer Chinowski and I'll be happy to make that available to each of you regarding the deficiency in the petition.
Yes, could you, could you make that available and also, Genevieve, would you like a copy of that as well? Could we?
Absolutely. I'll have it.
We have a copy for our neighbor as well?
Yes.
Genevieve, is that okay? If we get you a copy of that as well? Okay. Councilwoman, thank you for that. Thank you for adding to that.
And I have one last council comment. I just want to thank the town manager and our wonderful staff. They had a fabulous food truck Friday that I was at with my family and my son and great turnout, great food, lots of fun by everyone. And I know you guys worked really hard on that as you do everything. So just wanted to end on a positive note there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, although I didn't make it. Thank you for putting together and hopefully I'll get to one in the future.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I do have a couple of comments. First, I just want to remind everyone outside is a QR code sewer de septic. Please get your questions in. This is so critical. That's the only way that this informational exception on the septic to sewer conversion is going to be informational if we get your questions answered. So please, if you have not scanned this QR code or just write your comments here and turn them into the town, we need to do that. It's also in the buzz right here. You can scan that QR code, put the information in, drop it in the box. What we got to do, we got to hear from the town residents on this issue. So please, 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 this is, this is for all of us. And so we need to participate in order to get to have a great session so we know what questions to get answered. Yes, it was a great food truck event. I did get to ride around the old golf cart, me and the chief, and kind of make the tour of the town. And Chief, did we arrest somebody for armed robbery? Did we let them off? That's a joke. There was nobody. Your face was like, did we do what? No complaint. The kids loved it. The kids were going up and down the slide. I think Joe said that was his liability. All the kids running up and down the slide, getting wet and just hanging out. So that was fun. As always, I want to thank each of you for coming. I know it's a Monday night change of time and and so I appreciate you guys coming and spending the time. That's really all I had. And I guess we will take a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.